Seventh, a two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Smithfield Town Council to order. Pleasure having you all here tonight. The first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. We're privileged and honored this evening to have representatives from Boy Scouts Troop Number Three here in Smithfield, led by Robert Bieber Meyer, Committee Chairman of Troop Three, Brian Mokry, Assistant Scout Master, and Preston Tollitt, Kate Bieber Meyer, Abby Giltner, Isaac Smith, Ben Denencourt, and Ben Stimson. And if I missed anyone, please let me know, but at this time, would you all please rise for the pledge to be led by our Boy Scouts?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Scouts and Scout Masters, really a privilege and honor to have you here tonight. It's really a breath of fresh air to have our young people here to see democracy at work, and thank you for all the time that y'all put in as far as raising these folks up in a very positive and good environment. So again, thank you. The door is always open. You're always welcome, and you can be here every month as far as I'm concerned. So thank you so very much. Next item on the agenda is the informational section. We have the manager's report. Mr. Stallings?
Yes, sir. First thing I'd like to bring everybody's attention is this evening, we are live streaming our meeting for the first time ever. So you'll see some iPhones around the room that we're using. We've got Mr. Steve Clark from our Parks Director. Clark, if you could come forward. We did live streaming on Facebook, and then it'll be archived after that and be available for anybody to watch afterwards. So just want you guys to know that's happening this evening.
Okay, well, thank you. Recall during the last election, we heard loud and clear from the constituency that they wished to have these meetings livestreamed, and through Mr. Stallings and staff's diligence, we've been able to accomplish that. Mr. Clark, who's around the corner, very, very thankful for his assistance in getting that done. So thank you. Next item on the agenda, Monthly Activity Reports Committee. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This time, the public comments section. This is an opportunity for those individuals that wish to speak on matters that are not on the agenda, and we have a number of speakers signed up this evening. The first person is Mr. Chris Torrey. Mr. Torrey, if you could come forward. And as I have been advised this evening as well, please speak into the microphone because that will assist us in this livestreaming effort. So thank you. Pleasure to have you here this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, folks.
In five, of course, in five minutes, Tom.
Oh, I just have one quick question. Year before last, Mr. Luder asked the Town Council and the Board of Supervisors at a joint meeting, it was December twenty-second of two thousand twenty-one, for public slash private participation agreement for master infrastructure. I'm curious as to what might be included in a master infrastructure. What is it? Is it utilities? Is it the roadwork, curb gutter and sidewalk, the streets, street lighting? It makes a difference because he's asking us to pay, and we don't know what it is. The term "public-private participation agreement for master infrastructure" was raised again in Smithfield Times week before last, but we don't have any information about it. So if you could, if you fit to answer the question, what is master infrastructure, I'd appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your comment and appreciate your inquiry. Next person on the list is Mr. Bill Harris. Mr. Harris? Good evening, sir.
Good evening to you.
Sir.
Bill Harris, three twenty-nine Gray Street. As all of you know, a major theme of the recent town election was the need for increased transparency and responsiveness on the part of our municipal government. Each of the three winning candidates endorsed the need for better transparency and responsiveness on the part of the Town Council, and many of us are looking forward to seeing these things occur. We are encouraged by what we saw transpire in the first meeting of the new Town Council led by our new mayor, Mr. Bowman. That meeting had more energy and more positive feel than any meeting that preceded it over the last several years. Many in the room tonight hope that we can build on this new energy. In the past years, many speakers have come before Town Council and bemoan the fact that the public comments section of Town Council meeting is usually a little more than a one-way street where citizens offer comments or suggestions to Town Council and then go sit down. Rarely, if ever, is there any response to public comments at the time of the comments are made. Not once have I been present when the mayor has asked the members of the Town Council if they would like to respond or to make comment on what a citizen speaker has just said. Without response or comment, the citizens of the town never really know what the Town Council thinks, how decisions are made, and who held what position, core elements of transparency. The existing protocol says that any public comments that request a follow-up or need a response will receive a written response. I wonder if anyone here can actually point to an example of such, of a written follow-up being provided after a Town Council meeting. Listen, I'm not suggesting that the public comment time should involve public comments followed by Town Council response or questions in a rebuttal. Time and human behavior would not make that work well, but I would like the Town Council to consider ways through which it can more publicly share their views and justifications for actions taken on behalf of the citizenry. If the established method of public comment with no response continues as it is, many citizens will continue to believe that no one really listens, or more damning, no one really cares to hear what the citizens have to say. Without feedback, there can be no proof that any public comments have even been heard. One of the most appreciated elements of the last election cycle was the candidate forum, where public submitted questions to the candidates, and each candidate offered an answer to each question. Perhaps if we cannot expand the public comments section of Town Council meetings to include some sort of response, the Town Council might consider holding regularly scheduled informational Q and A sessions similar in structure to the candidate forum, perhaps quarterly. Doing so would give the Town Council members a chance to educate and inform, as well as to explain specific positions, while also providing the citizenry a chance to understand more about the decisions being made on their behalf. And speaking of open informational meetings, I was one of about a dozen people who attended Mr. Luder's informational meeting last Thursday evening. The presentation by Mr. Luder and his team was designed to answer a lot of questions, but I must honestly say I came away of that meeting with more questions than I did answers. While everyone on the team was cordial and entertained questions from the audience, most significant questions were answered in the most vague terms or ignored altogether. I am particularly concerned that Mr. Luder and his team carefully refused or ignored altogether certain very crucial issues, particularly their refusal to address any questions about proffers, or to what degree they intend to pay for what will be astronomical costs associated with the electrical, water use in sewage, paving and curbing, et cetera, infrastructure costs associated with the building of Ten Grange. I am also quite concerned that they could not produce evidence of an environmental impact study, or the required ground penetrating radar study that can confirm the total absence of historical burial sites, previous Native American dwelling sites, or in safe quarters on the old Pierceville property. I was assured that those studies have been conducted, and in fact, was told that they would be sent to me the next day. That has been five days, I have received nothing. Have these studies been presented to you guys as required prior to development? But perhaps the biggest eye-opener from Mr. Luder's meeting is that he shared that he intends to develop only Phase One of Ten Grange and is planning to sell off the rest of the acreage to other developers. I find this particularly troubling since when the project first came to light, many of those who embraced Ten Grange used the supporting argument that we knew it would be a good project because the Luters always do good projects. That's a good argument.
Your time has expired.
If Mr. Luder is not in control of Phase Two, can we really simply assume that all things will be done as well as the Luters might have done them? Thank you.
Before you leave, don't leave.
Love it.
First and foremost, I understand as far as the transparency aspect was concerned, I think we started down that path this evening by livestreaming for those that can't be here. As far as the dialogue is concerned, any council member is more than welcome. If it's a change of way to do a business, that might be the case, but as far as I'm concerned, I agree with you. If, as part and parcel of my responsibility as being a council member, which is what I consider myself first and foremost, I'm going to answer your questions if I have the answer. If I don't have the answer, I'm going to tell you that I'll get back to you, and then I'll rely on my town manager to make sure that we get back in touch with you. So during the course of that, however, we have to be very, very careful as we go down that path that we deal with some very sensitive topics, some topics that are very, very near and dear to a lot of people's hearts, concerns, they're emotional in nature, and I don't think that the public comments section is a time where we get into a dialogue or diatribe back and forth that at the end of it serves no useful purpose but causing problems. So I think there's got to be a level of civility involved as we do that. I'm not sure why the Town Council stopped doing that. I kind of think I may have an idea, but I won't get into that. But I will tell you this, when someone comes up here, and if I have the answer, and I believe it's appropriate that I comment back with an informed answer versus something that's just tit-for-tat, which is not the way that I operate, I'll get back with you and I'll tell you that. So I just want to let you know, we hear you loud and clear, and we're not going to sit up here like a bunch of adults and just go ahead and let your concerns fly over top of our head as if you don't have any reason for being here. We understand that you are citizens. We understand that from a governmental perspective, it's our job because of you. We are here, and we are a government of the people, and that's the way it's going to be. So I hear you loud and clear, I understand where you're coming from, and I thank you for your concerns.
And I appreciate the response.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Next person is Mary Harris. Ms. Harris?
Good evening, ma'am. Mary Harris, I live at three-two-nine Gray Street, and yes, Bill's my husband, so good job, Bill. I want to tell the council a big thank you for the work that's being done on Gray Street now. It has, the progress is obvious that the sidewalks are being repaired. It's kind of a finally in some of our heads, but we're glad it's being done. I know that things go slower sometimes than we expect. I do also want to talk about my other concern that I've talked about the council many times about, and that is the traffic and the congestion sometimes in downtown. In particular, I wanted to highlight, I kind of put together a list here of all of the developments in downtown that are either proposed, coming, or are happening today, and I wanted to say that we should be looking at this from a comprehensive perspective as we look at other things that are being requested around town and also in the county that are close to us, that border us. I put together some numbers on the town of Smithfield Development, one hundred and fifty-two Cypress Creek homes, seventy-four more in Churchill, twelve on Luder Acres, which is James and Washington. There are at least five buildable lots I know of downtown, which, one is in the process of being developed, eight hundred and twelve on Mallory Farm property, a hundred and fifty have been proposed on the park at Battery, which is behind Royal Farms, and the ten at Grange in Maine. That comes to a grand total of one thousand five hundred and five homes. That's a large number for a small town. Then I went and looked at what surrounds us in the county, just on the east and really south, so Ten, Seventeen Corridor, and the streets in between. There's something called Sweetgrass, which is proposing, I have a number of six hundred and fifteen, I've seen varying numbers of that. The crossings, two hundred and forty. Ben's Grant still is not fully built out, so I don't know what that number is. Timber Preserve, three hundred and forty. Brewer Station, two hundred and sixty-one. St. Luke's, a hundred and seventy-nine. Brewer, I said Brewer Station. South Harbor, three hundred and forty. Bridge Point Commons, three hundred and fifty. So that's twenty-five hundred and eighty-six new homes. I'm just bringing this up as we should be looking at what we do in Smithfield very comprehensively. If I throw all that together, that's four thousand new homes, just in the immediate area. Our traffic is bad. We've talked about that. It's really a problem. The last study that I quoted was from April of, April two thousand twenty-two. Gray Street had nineteen hundred and sixty cars on average per day for twenty-three residents on that street, by the way. You add Thomas to that, we get to twenty-nine residences on that street with that much traffic. The average traffic count by VDOT and other studies is about a thousand a day on a residential street. We're double that. Our plan, our comprehensive plan, actually lists our street as going about a thousand on average a day, which is not what happens. We know that from traffic studies. Carey Street has twenty-two hundred and eight on that study per day for thirty residences. And unbelievably, on Church Street, where there are forty-six residents who live there or homes, it's eleven thousand six hundred and eleven cars a day. That's a lot of traffic for a residential area, regardless of what's being done. We're going to add in another fifteen hundred homes and expect that traffic not to be huge. We're kind of kidding ourselves. I also did a study last year on my own of counts of homes in the downtown area. That total that I counted, that is just in what I call downtown proper, is about, and I have a spreadsheet on this, and I offered to share that with council if they'd like it. The total was about three hundred and eleven total homes. The Luter Development, and I will talk to that, is three hundred and four homes. It's almost going to double our downtown residency with one abutting residence. So I guess I'm trying to say is I'd like to see you all look at this very comprehensively. One of our goals is to reduce traffic. When I went to Luter's presentation, I actually went to the three o'clock, he talked about the goals he was going to try to meet and achieve with what he's doing. He was cherry picking, in my opinion, whatever matched his development, because I brought up to him very clearly that I was concerned about traffic and the access to downtown by his development and making Gray Street more of a through fare than it is, and that he had not even brought up traffic as a concern in one of our major goals.
Your time has expired.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure that we, the council, the people in the town, understand what's really happening with the growth that's being planned and the growth that is coming, and that we try to at least do this with a smart hat on our heads so that it doesn't overwhelm the residents here. I've been here thirty years, and I've seen an awful lot of growth and not always good. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. I came here December the first of nineteen eighty-two, was a young town police officer and was running radar on Gray Street back then, and we were receiving complaints about speeding in nineteen eighty-two. One of the problems that we're confronted with is that when you say on a residential street, that roadway through there is Route two fifty-eight business, and then we have South Church Street, which is Route ten business, that the state classifies them in that manner. So it begs us the chicken or the egg as far as were the residents built, residences built on business thoroughfares or vice versa? How do we, how do we deal with what we're confronted with as far as, you know, certain dynamics that occur through there as far as thoroughfare and things are concerned? But your point is well made. I think we were looking at some figures today. In nineteen eighty-two, I think we had like sixty-six hundred residents, and today I think we have nine...
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. So believe it or not, in forty years, we've gone up only about two thousand people. So from a growth perspective, we've done pretty good as far as that number's concerned, but then again, as you stated, we do have things in the offing that has potential to cause a significant number of, a number of increases. So we will keep an eye on that, and we look forward to your comments as we make our deliberations together.
Well, thank you, and that just raises my concern a little higher when our growth has only been that much, and now we're looking at this massive growth. So what will happen? I think that's the big question that has to be looked at.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Next is Mary Ellen Bieber Meyer. Ms. Bieber Meyer? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mary Ellen Bieber Meyer. I live at three fifty-five Gray Street. I also have some concerns about the development, the Grange at Ten Main, and I'll keep my comments very basic because I think I'll probably end up being here multiple times, and I don't want to give a big, long speech every time I'm here. So first of all, I want to say I'm not against the development. I think those of us that speak about it are given a bad rap by saying, oh, you're an assay, or you don't want it. I actually do. I'd like that we have another hotel. I'd like to have a couple more restaurants. But my issue with the business aspect of it, I, I think will be great. It'll be a good addition. Keep in mind that I also want to preserve our original downtown as well, so I think we need to be mindful of that. But I am concerned about the density of the housing, and for lack of a better word, it's too dense. There's too much there. There are too many apartments that are scheduled. The houses are, we talk on both sides of our mouth. We talk about affordable housing, and then we talk about luxury housing. Probably can't have both. I mean, I was told at the, that the meeting last week that Mr. Luder had, and I think it was even in the Smithfield Times, that most of the houses were going to be five-fifty to five-eighty thousand, hundred thousand. That's not affordable housing. That's not, you know, it's more on the luxury end. So we need to figure out what we're doing with it. Which is it? What are, what are we doing? We talk about a walkable Smithfield. When I first moved to Smithfield twenty years ago, we had, downtown, we had a grocery store, a hardware store, and a pharmacy. We don't have any of that right now. So in those twenty years, when we've had all this development, all of our businesses are moving out. So it's great to have a downtown. Smithfield is a good tourist place. I love living in downtown, but we also need to, we are bringing people in, that's tax money that we bring in, that's great, but we need to look at what else is happening in the town. Last year, when the comprehensive plan was, was discussed, there were a lot of height restrictions that, that the Planning Commission talked about, the Town Council talked about. When I saw the plan for Ten Grange, either the developer was not paying attention to that conversation, or he doesn't care. I'm not sure which is worse. So I'm going to say it's too dense and the height of the buildings is too high. Last but not least, and both, and Mrs. Harris has talked about this, is the traffic. There has to be a comprehensive plan for traffic in downtown Smithfield. I know everybody likes to blame VDOT. Well, we can't do it because of VDOT. Then let's pack our sleeping bags and sit on VDOT's porch, because this has to happen. There cannot be one entrance into Ten Grange off of Main Street. It has to come from Ten. It could be part of, there's been discussion about a flyover to connect Ten to Mill Swamp Road. Most of the traffic that we get on Carey Street, and I'm more on the one hundred block of Carey Street, are people going to Mill Swamp Road. They don't even want to be downtown. They're just trying to get out to the county. So that flyover has to happen. That flyover has to happen if this development is going to be put in, and it has to happen now. It can't happen after the fact. So that has to be part of all of this. This development will permanently alter Smithfield, not only greater Smithfield, but downtown Smithfield especially. So we have one chance to get this right, and I think we need to look at the whole package. Thank you very much.
Thank you. To your point about Ten and Grange, I've, as former Commissioner of Marine Resources, I heard a lot of cases that came before me, and spending a lot of time in courtrooms, I heard a lot of cases that came before judges. I've come to the conclusion that we have a process in place in which this project will be vetted, will be, things will change, things will come, and things will go before it gets to this council's table for any type of decision. I myself have made up my mind, and I don't know about my fellow council members, but I don't intend to get involved in the dialogue or discussion pertaining to Ten at Grange as far as traffic and things like that. Not that I'm not listening, I hear that, but I'm not going to go on record as far as what I think until all of our other entities have weighed in and done their due diligence and done their job. I think that's only fair. So while I hear what you're saying, I just want to let you know that if I don't respond, it's not that I don't care, it's that I have done this for a long time, and I feel that the way that I've done it has been fair to all involved. So I just want to give you a heads up, when you walk away and I don't say anything about that, that's the reason, and that's going to be my mantra going through this entire process. As I said just a little bit earlier to Mr. Harris about the comments back and forth, that matters not before council now, and it won't be for a while, and we've got some really smart people that are very, very good at listening and making some decisions before it gets to us, and I promise, before it gets to us, we will have as many questions answered, and it's up to you, as the citizens that have concerns, to make sure you ask those right questions at the appropriate level so that when we get what we get as far as a package is concerned, we're as informed as we possibly can when we make our decisions. So I just want to give you a heads up. That's, that's my personal feeling. Council can do whatever because they're all individually elected, but that's kind of where I'm coming from on this whole...
And I appreciate that, and I think as citizens, we want to make sure that we're part of the process as well, and that we're heard throughout and not just...
I, well, I've known, we've known each other for a while, and I'll just tell you this, as I said earlier on, this process and any other process, the citizens will be heard, they will be given ample opportunity, and as long as it takes to get everything out, that, that will be done, I can assure you. So when we get it, we are as informed as we possibly can be in making the most correct and informed decision we possibly can that's in the best interest and fairness to all involved.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. No one else has signed up as far as the public comments are concerned? Does anyone else wish to be heard in public comments section before we move along? Thanks so very much. The next item I have on the agenda is public comments. Next one is Public Works Reaccreditation Presentation from the Regional Director of APWA, Mr. Jeffrey P. Brown. Anyone making an introduction, or is Mr. Brown coming to the podium? Good evening, sir. Pleasure to have you with us.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. It's an exciting opportunity for me to be here. It's a time of celebration for your Public Works Department, and first and foremost, first and foremost, let me say thank you to Town Council and to Town Management for supporting Public Works in this endeavor. Couple of things, you know, I'm Jeffrey Brown. I am the Regional Director for APWA, serve on the National Board. I reside in North Carolina, work for the Town of Memorial School. I represent Region Three, which encompasses North Carolina Chapter, South Carolina, Tennessee, Kentucky, and a Mid-Atlantic Chapter, which this Virginia is part of. I had the honor of being in Alexandria, Virginia this morning to present them with their reaccreditation. So this is my second one today, so it is a pleasure and an honor to be here, and I say that's a time of celebration. I do want to take time to read just one thing here that I think kind of encompasses, you know, why we're here tonight for celebration. Accreditation is the mark of professionalism indicating a public works agency has made the commitment to continuous improvement in delivery of public works operation and services in community. Accreditation recognizes an agency's policies, procedures, and practices which have been evaluated by experienced public works professionals by comparing them against internationally recognized management practices appropriate for that specific agency. So what are the benefits of being accredited? It increases efficiency. It improves processes. It's, it takes into an account succession planning. It recognizes professional development, and it's a continuous improvement for an organization or agency to continuously look at their operations to see where improvements and efficiencies can be captured. So this, the town was, Public Works was officially accredited in two thousand and four, I believe, excuse me, two thousand and fourteen, so this is the third time in which the agency has been reaccredited. So they received their notice on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and they had a hundred and five total practices that were reviewed by agencies. that were reviewed, uh, by, uh, agencies and, and recognized for their hard work and dedication in the field of public works. Uh, they are the one hundred and seventy-eighth accredited agency in the United States. Uh, and like I said, I was in, uh, Virginia, Alexandria this morning earlier, and there's, you know, several, uh, agencies in Virginia. Alexandria, Chesapeake, Newport News, Woodstock, Richmond, uh, and Virginia Beach, and also the counties of Prince William and Fairfax. So at this point in time, I would just like to say thank you for all your hard work, Jack and Kathy. Kathy was, is the accreditation manager for your organization. Uh, there's a lot of work that goes into being accredited. Our agency received our reaccreditation in June of last year. Uh, and so basically Kathy, I was having a conversation with her. She said, "Well, we're starting back over now to start looking at stuff." So it, it's a full year process. So from the time you finish, you, you go right back into it. It's just like, uh, a budget process for Town Council. Seems like you, you do budget year round now. Uh, and I know I feel that way in our organization. So it's time you finish one and adopt one, you're going back into it and start looking at it, planning for the next, next time. So at this point in time, I would like to present Jack and Kathy. And, uh, any other Public Works, uh, official that's here or department representative? I've asked you to come forward.
So, on behalf of APWA National Board of Directors, I'd like to present the Town Public Works of Smithfield, Virginia, great job and your reaccreditation.
Mr. Brown, we thank you for being here. Um, one thing that, uh, that I'm, that really caught in my ear was those jurisdictions that you mentioned are significantly larger than the jurisdiction that we have here in the Town of Smithfield. And I would venture to say, just like law enforcement accreditation, that, you know, it, it, those jurisdictions have a lot more resources to put toward the accreditation process than likely we do that also wear a number of different hats when they do what they do. So I can tell you, on behalf of the Town Council, we're extremely proud of our Department of Public Works. We're extremely proud of this award. And, uh, as somebody was mentioning about Gray, I think Mr. Harris was mentioning in Gray Street about the sidewalks or anyway today, a lot of that's got to do with the public works being out there and observing and things and getting things done. So, uh, on behalf of the Town Council, we're extremely, extremely pleased. Jack, did you have any words you'd like to say?
Yes, sir. Um, and to your point, we're the second smallest in the state of Virginia. Uh, there's one a little bit smaller than us. Uh, but good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. I just wanted to briefly take a second and thank Council and Michael's continued support of our department through this process. Um, I also want to make sure we give credit where credit is due, and that's first and foremost to our accreditation manager, Kathy Bue Jones. She she led us through the process. She is very diligent in keeping us all on task and does an outstanding job. Um, next to our people in the field, which only Jeff is our lone These guys make sure we're following our policies and procedures and make sure all our staff understand the bigger picture of what accreditation is and what it's all about, which is our best management practices, which make us more effective and efficient in providing the essential services for all residents in our community.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it. Any comments from Members of Council?
Great job.
You got it. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mayor and Members of Council. A pleasure being here.
If you'd like to get some sleep and a good meal, you can spend some money in here at Smithfield. We'd love to have you here this afternoon.
I actually came in this afternoon. I spent some time in your downtown coffee shop for about a couple hours in there drinking coffee and doing work. So it was a nice downtown.
You're always welcome back. Thanks again for everything.
Well, thank you. I'll, uh, go get back home and try to catch the end of the state UVA game. So.
Go Hoos.
Well, we'll see about that. You probably will win as it is UVA. So, thank you, y'all. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Have a good one. Next thing I have on the agenda is council comments. This is an opportunity for council to make comments this evening on any matter that pleases them as long as within reason. Council comments? Mr. Pack, please.
I'd just like to give, uh, kudos to Town Staff and Michael for getting us live streamed as fast as we did and as efficiently as we did. That's not always something that happens in government, but, uh, I believe we spoke about it, uh, and, and made our intentions very clear a month or two ago, and tonight we're live streaming. So kudos for getting them done and, and so efficiently. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Other Members of Council, Mr. Stallings?
And I'd add that a lot of that thanks goes to Mr. Clark and Ms. Novak. Uh, you know, we were looking at a more traditional method using the IT department at the county like we, we contract with. And Steve had this idea and, um, and Amy brought it to me. We said run with it. So it's, it's, a lot of that goes to the two of them for thinking outside the box and coming up with a creative way to do it that allowed us to do it so quickly and relatively inexpensively.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else? Seeing none, the next is consent agenda items. First item is recommendation to award historic district guidelines, entrance corridor overlay, district guidelines update.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like I
Who's got that? Ms. Pack?
Both C one and C two this evening.
Okay, proceed, please. C two?
Okay. Uh, our first consent agenda item is to recommend, uh, an award. Not breaking no shit. One second.
I know the feeling.
Yeah. Uh, we put an RFP for historic district guidelines and entrance corridor overlay, uh, update. They haven't been updated in a bit. Uh, we have, uh, staff has recommended Paleo West at the cost of forty-five thousand dollars to go, move forward with these updates and make sure that we are in line with what we're supposed to be doing. Uh, we do recommend, uh, the Paleo West is awarded that. And then finally, item C two, uh, we have a number of invoices in excess of twenty thousand dollars that require capitalizations this evening. Uh, the first one is to Lewis Construction for the Drummond Lane and Cedar Street work, twenty thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. The second is to Harrisville Metal Works for Public Works Metal Building to house our new back truck that we bought, uh, a year or so ago, sixty thousand two sixty-seven fifty. That's also being paid for with ARPA funds for those that are taking note. Uh, to NASTAS SS Contractors LLC, this is their first bill of two on this, uh, on this evening. This is for the Wilson Road Water Storage Tank Rehab, eighty-five thousand seven twenty-two fifty. That is a progress payment. Uh, Kenley Moore, uh, our resident engineers for their work on, on the same water storage tank, twenty-four thousand seventy-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. To Axon Enterprises, which were retasters, body cams, and ink card cameras for our police department, that is sixty-one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, we just finished up our audit and Robinson Farmer Co. Associates, uh, the thirty-two thousand dollar bill for our audit here. Uh, we have Blair Brothers for the Benz Church of South Church Street and Intersection Project, which is an additional invoice. All of these next ones are additional invoices received since our Finance Committee, thirty thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. Iowa White County for IT Services, forty thousand five hundred dollars. Iowa White County E nine one one joint services. Uh, this is a shared service with them as well, hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. Those are both true ups, uh, on, on the year. Uh, Core and Main Water Meters, this is a collection of water meters that are newly accredited, uh, Public Works Department keeps going hand, twenty-seven thousand dollars. And to Sidney or Hydro for the Crescent Street Pump Station, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And then finally, one last invoice, uh, wrapping up the order, uh, rehab on Wilson Road, NASTAS SS Contractors, two hundred two thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Mr. Mayor, we do recommend these invoices, uh, are approved for payment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Pack by Members of Council? Being none, the Chair will entertain a motion. Ms. Pack?
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we approve item C one and C two as presented.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Further discussion. Call for a question, please.
Mrs. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Uh.
Mayor Bowman?
Yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Action Section. This is a public hearing. First one is special use permit, two thirty-five Main Street. Ms. Tammy Clary, Director of Public Community Development and Planning. Ms. Clary, good evening, ma'am.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. Uh, the applicant is seeking approval for a special use permit. This is pursuant to the Smithfield Zoning Ordinance, Article three H, Section C. This is in order to allow the conversion of any residential structure for a non-residential use as the principal use of the, the, uh, principal use of the building, even if the converted use in question is one of the permitted uses, um, in Section B. The current, uh, primary use of the property is a single-family detached dwelling. The applicant is seeking approval to convert this to a general or professional office pursuant to Article three H B three. The business intends to employ approximately three to five people and will operate between eight AM until six PM. Customers and employees will use on-street parking and the public parking lot to access the proposed business. The applicant has stated that the exterior appearance and color of the building will not change, except for potentially a small, uh, sign. The positives of this application, uh, they're not proposing any exterior structural changes to the property, and they are seeking approval for the specific use of a general or professional office. Um, the negatives is the requested by right use. This is a requested by right use. However, because they are converting it from a residential structure to a non-residential structure, it does require a special use permit. At the Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, this application was favorably recommended to Town Council, to Town Council. Town staff do support this application, provided that any proposed signage is properly approved through the BHAR if required, and the applicant also must obtain a new certificate of occupancy from Iowa White County. Uh, since the drafting of this staff report, the applicant has provided Iowa White County, uh, with an engineered survey. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of Ms. Clary by Members of Council? Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present or represented? Good evening, sir. Could you state your name for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. I'm Tim Ryan. Address is one one two two zero Shelter Cove, Smithfield, Virginia. I'm the owner of Spear Point Investment Group and two three five Main. I'm open to your questions.
Any questions of the gentlemen by Members of Council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wishes to be heard for or against this matter? Public hearing is now closed. The matter is before council for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I will just add, as Ms. Clary mentioned, that this did come for, uh, uh, before the planning commission, which I rep the council on. Uh, we did, uh, have some discussion on this and recommend a favorable, uh, approval this evening with the recommendations imposed by staff.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Pack by Members of Council? Further questions? The Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve this as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Pack, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Further discussion. Call a question, please.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Uh.
Mr. Hall?
Uh.
Mrs. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is number two, public hearing, text amendment, Article two, point AA, public buildings new construction. Tammy Clary, Director of Community Development and Planning. Ms. Clary, again, good evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Members of Council. At its Tuesday, August ninth, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commissioners inquired, there was an ordinance or design guideline, um, that set a standard for design of public buildings located outside of the entrance corridor overlays five hundred foot, uh, buffer. Uh, we did provide draft language at the Monday, November seventh, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission meeting for review. We incorporated the comments received and provided a redlined draft version for review and discussion. Uh, Town staff did use this language, uh, to provide detailed provisions that would be used in the design of any newly constructed municipal public building, including the construction of additional square footage of an existing building and its accessory structures, even if these were located outside of the entrance corridor overlays buffer. These provisions, uh, would apply to state and federal, uh, public buildings as well. Uh, the draft language provides the procedures for processing applications along with the procedures for waivers, uh, and appeals. At the request of the Planning Commission, we also deleted, uh, Section AA one BI, which excluded pump stations and other public utility structures that were going to be dedicated to the town. And then we also excluded the section that was exempting state and federal buildings. This draft version was favorably recommended to Town Council at the Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Uh, Town staff do recommend a robust discussion and a consensus on finalized language. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Questions by Members of Council for Ms. Clary?
I do, and I think
Mr. Brooks?
I think we're gonna need to, um, discuss this further. I just want to make it, I want to make sure that I've got it clear. For instance, this would apply to the back truck building that we are, um, basically storing the back truck out of sight, um, regardless of, um, whether anybody can see it or not. So we would have to conform to this code. We just saw that we have about a sixty thousand dollar, uh, metal building that's going to be storing this building. I can't imagine what it would cost to build that same building in accordance with this code.
Ms. Clary, you have a comment or Mr. Mr. Stallings, who, who, Ms. Clary?
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. There is a waiver section, um, that the applicant, being the town or county or state or federal, could, uh, utilize in order to seek a waiver from the Planning Commission from those ECO requirements.
Okay. Further question? Mr. Mr. Pack?
As I made you say, Mr. Brooks, we, we contemplated that, and, and your point does not fall on deaf ears and, and planning commission with it. And that is what, Ms. Clary, there are exceptions where it makes sense to allow. There's no reason to go to the public works area and build a giant brick building that is gorgeous and looks like Smithfield Foods to match the other buildings that are metal buildings. Uh, but there are certain instances where we would like to see those things, particularly in developments that come along, uh, and you can't have one without the other. So there is an order, there is a special use, uh, exception in there if the Planning Commission and Town Council choose to exercise it.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And if I can, to your point, the exception to remain within the, the confines of this new, uh, ordinance would be like, uh, pump stations and things like that that go into developments that should conform with the architectural design within that development. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because we have, I mean, if you look at our pump stations we have around town, you know, you could have gotten off on a cheap, made them cinder block and, and put a flat roof on them or whatever, but we haven't done that. And they look very, you know, as good, as possible can. But then again, if the pump station is out behind a shopping center that nobody sees, then it sounds like it has plenty of room for reasonability to me, to it at this juncture.
Correct.
Correct?
I just want to clarify that the, the waiver section is, would just go before Planning Commission. It, we did not include it as a special use permit that would require Planning Commission and Town Council.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions of Ms. Clary? Thank you, Ms. Clary. This is a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wish to comment on this matter? Their hearing none. Public hearing is closed. The matter is before the council for, uh, for discussion and action. Mr. Riddick, did you have something?
Just may I prepare an ordinance that amends, uh, the zoning ordinance, Article two general regulations to include the proposed Section AA pertaining to public buildings and new construction. And if the council is so inclined, a motion to adopt the ordinance would accomplish regardless of this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick. Matters before council.
I'd like to make a mo-
Ms. Ms.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, accept the text amendment to Article two dash AA for public buildings and new construction.
Thank you. Motion made by Vice Mayor Butler. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pack. Further discussion on the matter. Call for a question, please.
Mr. Smith?
Uh.
Mr. Hall?
Uh.
Mrs. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item three, motion to adopt an ordinance to change the number of Planning Commission members to serve the Town of Smithfield. Mr. Riddick?
Mr. Mayor, this falls to me, I believe. Items, uh, the next three items, this item and the two following it, all are related. If you recall, at your January meeting of the Town Council, it was essentially an organizational meeting, but there were two items, there was an item, or several items on the, um, agenda that involved the appointment of new members to certain committees. In particular, there was a, um, a committee proposed, uh, formed to propose new members to be adopt, uh, appointed to the Planning Commission. And the committee made recommendations and three new persons were, um, recommended for appointment to the Planning Commission, all of whom were eminently qualified. The problem was that we made inadvertently made a mistake, and that is that the town code requires that one of the members on the Planning Commission should also, is required to serve on the, uh, Board of Historic and Architectural View. In other words, there has to be representation on both boards by one person. And in And in appointing the persons that were appointed, we failed to do that. So, we realized that after the fact, and back in committee meetings, we discussed this, you discussed this, and the solution, the temporary solution, or really, it's a permanent solution with a, perhaps a temporary duration. We are proposing that we amend Section 2-236 of the town code that establishes the number of members on the Planning Commission. The state code permits as many as 15. The town's current ordinance permits seven. The, I proposed a, or prepared a new ordinance that says that a Planning Commission is hereby created for the town. Such commission shall consist of at least seven, but not more than eight members, one of whom may be a member of the town council, and the remaining six or seven, of whom, here and after referred to as appointed members, shall be residents of the town and qualified by knowledge and experience to make decisions on questions of community growth and development. At least half of the members shall be owners of real property. The only change is we've increased the number from seven to as many as eight. It doesn't have to be eight, but it has to be as many as seven. So, if you adopt this, you can then appoint another member to satisfy the requirement that somebody be on the Planning Commission and the Board of Historic and Architectural Review, and it will, it resolves our conflict, and as I think you expressed, there was not much appetite for removing any of the members who'd already been previously appointed. So, I think it's a very workable fix.
Yeah, to that point, I don't know whether if y'all picked up on the newspaper this morning, the same type of mechanism, you may be familiar with the State Corporation Commission, one of the most powerful deliberative bodies in the Commonwealth of Virginia that sets utility rates and things like that or whatever. Well, they've been at loggerheads for about a, the General Assembly has for about a year now, and can't determine a third member. So, what they have decided to do in Richmond is to appoint, allow for the appointment of two new members of the State Corporation Commission, and when one retires, they will not replace that person that retires, and they'll be back to three. It's a similar solution that what we're dealing with now. So, the brilliance of the deliberative body down here in Smithfield is awe-inspiring, so we were one step above the General Assembly, but anyway. Yeah, one could argue maybe other ways, but anyway. But thank you. Any questions of Mr. Riddick?
So, this may be-
You go ahead, Ms. Roundtree.
Obvious, but my question would be, if you have eight, then what happens with a tie?
A motion that, where the vote ties fails.
You have to have a majority.
Have to have a majority.
Yeah, it goes back to reading the charter, and for whatever reason, our charter says that we are guided by the rules of the House of Delegates. It's how we conduct business here. Not Robert's Rules of Order, which would be a little bit simpler to maintain, but the House of Delegates, but both of them are very specific that if you've been around a committee meeting up there, if you get a tie, it's out the door, and you're done.
And to that point, it's not uncommon that bodies who have odd numbers of members have situations where the vote ends in a tie because somebody has to recuse themselves or abstain.
Gotcha.
Or they leave to go to the bathroom real fast, but it's time the vote comes up. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? What's the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor, I make-
Mr. Hall?
I make a motion to adopt number 3, 4, 5.
You can't do it with one of the-
Yeah, but I like the way you think, a little bit. Go ahead.
With motion number 3, to adopt the ordinance to change the number of Planning Commission members to serve on the town council.
Motion made by Mr. Hall, is there a second to the motion? Mr. Smith, seconded. Further discussion? Call for the question, please, ma'am.
Mrs. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Ah.
Mr. Hall?
Ah.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. Next item.
Yes, sir. The, this is really an advisory matter. You just made a change to your Planning Commission, changing the number from seven to eight. Before you, in your package, is a copy of the Smithfield Planning Commission bylaws. We have revised them to comport with the change you just made to the ordinance, and all I would recommend is that you make a recommendation to the Planning Commission for them to revise and change their bylaws accordingly. You can't do that for them. They have to do it themselves.
Further questions of Mr. Riddick? It's pretty straightforward. All we're doing is asking them in a nice way to do things to conform. Any questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make the recommendation that we recommend to the Smithfield Planning Commission that they amend their bylaws and change the number of members to serve from seven to eight.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Pack, seconded by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Call a question, please, ma'am.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Ah.
Mr. Smith?
Ah.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mrs. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye.
And finally, this is really back in your lap.
And it will be.
The, there's a committee appointed to recommend a new member to fill the open seat on the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks, you comment on that matter?
Yeah, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. Council and citizens, I've spent countless hours and sleepless nights going back and forth on this issue that was created, that Councilman Smith and I have been working on for the past couple of weeks. It's an unfortunate situation that we're thrown into, but we've gotta address it, and I wanted to make sure that we thought it through extremely well. There were other ideas of how we could go about this. I consulted with several people, and it came up to that what we just decided on was the absolute perfect solution. So, from that point on, I went and, along with Mr. Smith, talked to several people about this vacancy, and Councilman Smith and I have come up and would like to recommend Julia Hilligas to that position.
All right, sir. Any questions of Mr. Brooks? Mr. Smith, you have any comment?
Oh, yeah, I do.
Please.
We, Jeff, like Jeff said, we spent a lot of time on this. You know, we talk about sleepless nights. Of course, the mayor told me we didn't need that, but it happens. We get to thinking about a situation as important as this. We do understand the situation at hand moving forward with the town and the growth. That's been key to me for a long time, keeping my finger on the pulse of that. So, this nomination and the one we did before was very important to us, me and Beth. They would spend a lot of time on that, and Jeff and I had talked and hashed this out, and we feel like we've made an excellent recommendation, and we'd like to see that move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions of Mr. Smith by members of council?
So, Ms. Hilligas is currently on BHAR?
Yes.
Correct.
And how much longer is her term?
Well, she, her term expired January 31st.
On BHAR?
Oh, excuse me, on Planning Commission, correct.
Yeah, so, you're gonna put her back on Planning Commission vis a vis her BHAR post and the, right, synergy there? So, does anyone know when her BHAR term expires?
I don't remember.
One thing about it, we'll be certain to make sure that we'll be making considerations before it expires. The other thing is, I've talked with Mr. Stallings about, look, the bottom line is, it's the first decision that we made after I became mayor. A lot of things were moving pretty fast, and believe me, when we make mistakes like this, I don't like making them, number one. Number two, not gonna happen again, so what we've done now is directed Mr. Stallings to any time we have, any type of these appointments to come forward again, Mr. Riddick is gonna vet them not for necessarily their suitability, he will be vetting them for their qualifications to be appointed to that, all the folks involved. We'll ultimately make the decision before we start making decisions again to cause this debacle, which I take, it's, the bottom line is, I was the mayor, I was the one, we rolled it, so I just will make sure that it doesn't happen again. So, that's where we are.
It's more a matter of curiosity than anything else, right? But-
I can answer that for you.
I've got it.
Ms. Hilligas is January 31st, 2026.
Right.
Oh, perfect. I just didn't want to, like, appoint her, and then, hey, six months later, I gotta do it again. Not that that really mattered. Again, point of curiosity.
Oh, it matters.
Okay. Thank you.
It matters. Further questions, comments? We made a motion? Motion and second?
He made a recommendation.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we accept the nominated committee recommendation to appoint a member of BHAR to the Smithfield Planning Commission.
And that would be Julia Hilligas?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Call the question, please, ma'am.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Ah.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Ah.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. Next item is item number 6, approval of meeting minutes from the January 3, 2023 meeting. Mr. Riddick?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I've reviewed the minutes, and I would recommend they be approved as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Mr. Pack. Further discussion? All are favorable in motion? I would excuse me, call for the question.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Ah.
Mr. Hall?
Ah.
Mrs. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. Item number 7 is new business. Is there any new business to come before council? Mr. Stallings, you have any?
Yes.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes, sir.
Next item is item number 8, old business. Any old business needs to be revisited by members of the council? Being none, the next item is closed session. Closed session for the purpose of discussing the acquisition/disposition of publicly held real property pursuant to 2.2-3711A3 and personnel matters pursuant to 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion to go into closed session for those purposes.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Hall, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by-
She wins, she's the vice mayor.
By Ms. Roundtree.
Okay.
Call for the question, please.
Mr. Smith?
Ah.
Mrs. Roundtree?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Ah.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. Next item is item number 6, approval of meeting minutes from the January 3, 2023 meeting. Mr. Riddick?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I've reviewed the minutes, and I would recommend they be approved as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Mr. Pack. Further discussion? All are favorable in motion? I would excuse me, call for the question.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Ah.
Mr. Hall?
Ah.
Mrs. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. Item number 7 is new business. Is there any new business to come before council? Mr. Stallings, you have any?
Yes.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes, sir.
Next item is item number 8, old business. Any old business needs to be revisited by members of the council? Being none, the next item is closed session. Closed session for the purpose of discussing the acquisition/disposition of publicly held real property pursuant to 2.2-3711A3 and personnel matters pursuant to 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion to go into closed session for those purposes.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Hall, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by-
She wins, she's the vice mayor.
By Ms. Roundtree.
Okay.
Call for the question, please.
Mr. Smith?
Ah.
Mrs. Roundtree?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Ah.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. Next item is item number 6, approval of meeting minutes from the January 3, 2023 meeting. Mr. Riddick?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I've reviewed the minutes, and I would recommend they be approved as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Mr. Pack. Further discussion? All are favorable in motion? I would excuse me, call for the question.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Ah.
Mr. Hall?
Ah.
Mrs. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. Item number 7 is new business. Is there any new business to come before council? Mr. Stallings, you have any?
Yes.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes, sir.
Next item is item number 8, old business. Any old business needs to be revisited by members of the council? Being none, the next item is closed session. Closed session for the purpose of discussing the acquisition/disposition of publicly held real property pursuant to 2.2-3711A3 and personnel matters pursuant to 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion to go into closed session for those purposes.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Hall, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by-[1500.13]
Wait a second.
No, maybe you should go picture up there. They'll really come to him and he said that he shouted his screen today.
I'm surprised with it being kind of cushy and you know that it didn't give. Oh, you're an idiot for leaving it.
Yeah, I'm with Chris, yeah.
When you go buy some bubble beans. I'm not gonna stand. I'm gonna do it up for my kids. You get a scrapbooking one. Look, she's gotta look at him, not me. Not my dog. No. He comes over and rashes me.
I don't know, no, no. I'll see you tomorrow. It's been fun, guys. I don't ever see comments on any of our stuff. Our comments turn off or everything's done. I'm still learning about words. I don't love it. I just do it for the smartest of the councilors. Cause everybody's like, did you see what happened? Your sports page, I'm like, what? So I'll make it really cold down there in that room, and run them out, so it's clear. And somebody wants to buy it from us. Is that right? Okay. Well, that sounds pretty fair. It's a very bad day. It sounds like a nightmare. That sounds worse. Yeah. That's gotta be really, it's funny thinking about it right now, I should take one. I don't ever have to. I didn't think about that. I don't know why the screen was down. No, I think it was a meeting. I'm Amy Novak. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay. Y'all got married at the manor, huh?
Yes, we got married.
Good, yes. That's my proper team, Miss Novak. Y'all enjoy us. I saw you coming down in the carriage.
Yeah. My aunt gave me her mink and it matched my dress perfectly. I couldn't have worked out better. Planned, it was just in December, I got married. It was really, it was really nice.
My friend let me wear her mink in, uh, Stockyards in Dallas, Fort Worth.
Yeah.
And I was like, are there gonna be animal herders? She's like, it's Texas.
Yes, Texas.
Fine. I'm like, I don't know. I'm just like looking at everybody like, oh.
I know, I know. My aunt is terrible. She had to tell my mom to call me to make sure that no one was gonna be throwing paint at me in the carriage. Nobody even knows. I'm wearing a mink. Nobody even knows if there's a carriage ride except for people that are coming to.
It was a Thursday, right?
It was a Thursday. I'm like, so then even getting ready at my house. And I'm like, oh my god.
Just take, I'll be cold.
But yeah, now she planted a seed and I'm like, oh my gosh, I should wear that gear. Like you said, Texas now.
Yeah.
Amazing why I figured out to happen there. The first place, the year before was the, um, D and S. No, the one, no, the, um, for the town. With the Christmas, where you go around.
Christmas in San Diego.
You get a tour of it, everything.
Y'all are sitting in it, okay.
So when, I mean, you proposed in March, I was like, I know exactly where we're having this. Cause I am a board game person, so I set up all kinds of board games downstairs. And I had friends come over to the house, weeks preceding, to run all my card games and board games. So we had, yeah, the full table. We had board games going on, it was fun.
Yeah, the basement's my favorite space.
Yeah, yeah. You guys familiar with Cards Against Humanity?
Yes.
I found online Cards Against Magic Money, and it's actually worse.
Oh, no.
But I had to buy it, so that was set up there too.
We like playing L C R. It's a dice game. And, um, the letters on it are either left, center, or right, L C R, or key. Oh, center is key. Yeah, so you roll the three dice and you have three dollars in front of you, everybody does. Put it in the pile, or you keep it, or you give it to this person or that person. And it just goes on and on until one person sits at the spot.
Oh, wow.
And that's the winner. And even my kids can play.
That's cool.
So it's fun, that's a good game.
Nice.
And it's got money in it.
Yeah. And it's not a lot, three dollars. Now the sidewalks have parking lots, that's nice. But I can't leave the house without climbing over the first one. And you can't pull like this. There's no way to get out.
Did you put your handprints?
No, but I.
That's weird for a sandwich.
I figure Jeff and I should do something. It is our house, but we have to climb over this wall to get out. Yeah, get in her garden, walk to her, get to her driveway.
Justin has seen this night in.
Yeah, so we need, we want to climb over the wall. It's not that bad. He could go over it. He told me he could go over it all the way. I said, oh, good, that means with my bad knees, I won't have any problem. He can get over it, I'm okay.
I don't think people knew we were gonna live. Cause we're kinda doing it quietly. The council or the audience, oh, gotcha. Oh, they knew.
That's the next big rap right there.
We have bottled water in our places. Bottled water in a pot. No, I said, I'll do glasses of water. And he's like, okay, weird. Just give me some water. There's so much trash around here. It's so disappointing, isn't it?
Right, if you're like, I did it at Park Drive. You're not, you're not working at an office, I can take you to work. You're done.
They want Halloween, they want to see some church, I don't want to cheer up the ball. You can get her house parking lot.
Well, first of all. Oh, I'm here in fucking town.
Yeah, you, that's, well, it's great that I only work. I go back when they were doing all that construction. But then my last year, you know, we found. Yeah, I work in all camps and all sort of cities and that.
Well, that's why I need attention.
Got us, someone support what she does.
So let's make it. So they need to know what they're up against. Cause you can't just bring somebody else in and say, go to work.
Then you got hours, hours, you work seven days. You can't go along the wrong way.
Yes. And, um, when I was over at the manor house with Tyler and Michael today, that's what I think. They start talking about the church, right, that's it. Can't just keep handing those other goodies out this way. I know, we're holding it with our feet. I think it should be the staff first. And we kind of give our challenges, we talk about what we're up against already, and what we're doing. Oh, that is. That's not good. I think the staff should be there, which is first layout, where challenges are, what they're already doing. And then the council. Then she knows what to tell the council, like, they're already doing this. And this is why they can't. It's amazing. And usually we make them uncomfortable like this day. You can't break your feet, or it makes a second video, and it's off. But I'm not gonna hack y'all's. So, cause even now we're trying to make it out. So, Steve, the mayor's there. Someone in there is drunk the tables. Uh-huh, it's not like a manor, it says closed session. Oh, wait, maybe.
Everybody slow down, they stop, they had a guy that went, maybe I'll put them out there, and then they, the winners will. Yeah. There's nobody watching besides me.
And nobody can hear.
That's all I know.